Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 8, 2022, meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Hetske.
Hetske here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Weisar.
Weisar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Gray here.
Okay. We have minutes from our August 11 meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them, and maybe we can entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Just for the people that are here in the audience today, we begin our meetings. Tonight is a public hearing night, and we, between 6:30 and 7 o'clock, we typically have a work session and get tabled matters, as many of the tabled matters off our agenda as possible. If we finish those before 7, we'll begin the public hearing immediately following that. But otherwise, we will stop what we're doing at 7 o'clock and hold the public hearing, and then we'll go back to the work session if we still haven't finished. So let's begin with the tabled items, and why don't we do 3 and 4 first so that...
Get them off the agenda quickly.
Yes.
All right, starting with...
Bills are playing tonight.
Starting with tabled application item number 3, 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Chick-fil-A. Staff has been in discussion with the applicant. The applicant has sent in a formal request to table to allow them additional time to address town comments.
Okay. Somebody want to move to continue tabling?
I'll move to continue tabling that application.
I'll second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Application number 4, 2070 Empire Boulevard, the RNE substation 55. Staff has been in discussions with the applicant. They are working to get their revised site plan package together, but knew they wouldn't make it in by this meeting's deadline. They're requesting to table until 9:22, our next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Motion to table till 9:22.
Tidings, aye.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Let's go back to number 1 and number 2.
All right. Starting with number 1, 1801 and 1787, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the past stone mixed-use development. So at the last meeting, the applicant had shared with us three more concept-level drawings that represent a significant change from what had been earlier proposed. Instead of utilizing the nine acres that they were looking at between the Grossman property and a portion of the Wycombe property, it's looking now entirely at the Wycombe property and reorienting the buildings towards the rear of the property, bringing out an access drive or a primary roadway directly adjacent or directly across from Suites Corners Road. The applicant is looking for feedback prior to moving or redeveloping these plans into full engineered site plans to get the board's comfort level with the orientation of the buildings, the balance of the Zone A, Zone B requirements. The application was previously, had been proposed to be almost entirely within the Zone A section of the two properties, and is now proposed to be a mix of both the Zone A and Zone B, which have differing requirements. And to get you guys' feedbacks on whether those, the way they've proposed it balances the two requirements' needs effectively.
I know that we are trying to get some feedback from some of the board members that were not present at the last meeting, and one of them is also not present at this meeting. He did send me some comments. I don't know if they are exhaustive, but he did send me four comments that I have sent along to the town. I can read through some of the comments right now, and then we can make sure that the applicant gets copies of them. And some of them are just, to me, seemingly like technical or where things are placed on them, but I'll read them. Of the three proposed new options for the past stone mixed-use development, the board generally favors option 1, as shown on drawing sheet SK1, which I think that's a general... We, I believe, as a board, we've all kind of agreed that the first option, option A... Terry, did you get a chance to weigh in on those, basically the different road configurations? And what was your thought on that?
Several times, actually, because of the length of it. Yeah, and I agree. I think it was a lot better than the A.
The first version, okay. And then he says, "Legend noted in the upper right corner of the drawing is labeled as alternate A," or alternate 3A, but perhaps should be labeled as alternate number 1." So I'm not sure where that is on the drawing, but...
It's over here.
Oh, it's in the little square box in the upper right corner. I said that there were, some of the comments were not that heavy-duty. "Applicant should clarify spaces in each building that contribute to the aggregate total square footage for proposed non-residential development." And there's also a comment about whether we need to discuss whether the clubhouse should qualify as non-residential, and the legal definition in the Uniform Code he cites is residential group R includes, among others, the use of a building or structure or a portion thereof for sleeping purposes when not classified as an institutional group 1, or when not regulated by the Residential Code of New York State. So based on that definition, the clubhouse would be considered non-residential. So that, to me, tends to make sense. "Applicant should provide a matrix for the entire project that shows the different type and location of residential housing being proposed in accordance with the mixed-use development manual." So that's probably the most meaty comment.
Yeah, yes.
And I would personally agree that probably would be a good idea to put together a matrix like that that...
Yeah, so I think he's referencing...
Kind of lays out how it ties in and satisfies a table 6.1.
Well, it's table 6.1.5, but there's also earlier on in our description of the guidelines for the Route 250 calls for providing a variety of housing types. So I believe, you know, he could be referencing that guideline as well.
Do we want to put a letter together about our thoughts on this? What do you...
You do essentially a sketch-type letter.
Almost like a sketch-type letter?
I mean, I think that'd be a good way to make sure that... There's kind of consensus about what the comments are?
Yeah.
Much like you do for a sketch plan.
So similar to a sketch-type response letter.
Yes, but I mean, this is like, probably has less detail than even, I think, some sketch applications would be, but I think, generally speaking, you can provide feedback that way.
Okay.
And that will give you an opportunity to capture, you know, Member Burton's comments as well.
So overall layout, conceptually, on the right track? Would everybody agree with that?
Yes.
I think it's good, yes.
And maybe we can incorporate Jim's comments.
We can incorporate Jim's comments.
I just want to make sure that we're in the spirit of the mixed-use community. I mean, it's been, I know it's a, sounds like a dead horse at this point, but it's still important.
And providing a sketch, sort of a letter, would allow the board, if there were some more generalized comments, to be able to incorporate some of those. Our resolutions tend to be very, the tabling resolutions tend to have conditioning that is very specific on technical matters that need to be corrected, whereas a letter could be more generalized on if there are some ideas, not to say it must, you know, the road must be moved 15 feet due east, is to say, you know, reorienting the road or taking a look at this property's location and reorienting the road, or providing, you know, comment could be to provide suitable locations on the entry drive to incorporate neighboring development, potential neighboring developments, something that's a little bit more general rather than a very specific technical comment.
Agreed.
Is this going to provide enough, like, green space and everything that we think's necessary now if we move everything back?
I believe so, but that all would be a part of the submission and calculations for that.
If only they resubmit it. And they're happy because they got their number of units since?
Yes, the total number of units haven't changed. It's still 136.
One thing, I guess, you know, and this might be an engineering department question, is Zone A, Zone B border, in the manual, they're not exactly exact, and how do we define the boundaries of those zones, not just on this parcel, but on every other parcel? And what leeway? That'd be a question for you, probably. What leeway do we have in minor movements of those?
Right. That's also one of the things, as we look at with the moratorium and making tweaks to the code, that's something that I think should be on the table as far as tightening up how that should be defined.
Right, right.
And what type of flexibility the planning board ought to have or ought not have on that point.
Right. Okay. What else do we need to cover on this?
And obviously, they're going to clean up that front area. If they're just going to start in the back, that front area will be all cleaned up.
Talking about the Grossman's parcel?
Yes.
That could certainly be something we need to...
When they get in there, they need a little cleanup, yeah. I like Mira's recommendation on the townhouse. I think I was reading that and watching it on TV, that townhouse design, but that'll be later on. But I like, she came up with two different townhouses.
So that's like on the variety of housing types?
Yeah.
You'd like to see townhomes incorporated as part of the different types of housing in addition to apartments?
Correct.
You know, traditional style.
Is that something you guys would like to see expanded to more than one building? Or a readjusting the balance of what's in apartments versus what's in townhomes, like expanding the number of townhome units? Is that something the board is interested in seeing? You know, providing more, maybe more than one building? Or, you know, doing a development in such a way that, I know during the previous meeting they had talked about potentially looking at taking those townhome units, incorporating them on the shared pedestrian walk, sort of as a walk-up style, doing that along more of the pedestrian, the pedestrian walk, and potentially reducing the number of apartment units and increasing the number of townhome units?
Well, certainly would be good to have a nice eclectic community with a diversity of housing types.
Okay.
I do like the idea of, hey, along that pedestrian spine, if we had, you know, if it becomes an actual, kind of like a street, that'd be nice.
Yeah, providing front access, pedestrian access to the buildings, and having vehicular access through the rear, yeah.
Okay.
And I keep asking, there's no daycare involved anymore?
I think there...
Anymore?
That I'm not sure about. That might be still...
Might reappear again, the daycare?
I think that's still on the table or in discussion.
We're still in the process of identifying the town.
Okay, so it's still a possibility. So that's why you keep leaving there, okay.
It's in there because it's that, what you have in front of you is what the legal that we published back in July of 2021 stated.
Okay.
We just haven't updated or provided new legal.
Good.
All right. So should we begin the draft of a letter? What do we...
Yeah, so let's just talk a little bit about the logistics. So do you think staff, how long do you think, like, there'd be a letter ready to review and approve by the next meeting? Seems like...
I mean, if the board is comfortable with it, I, we can draft it based on previous comments, current comments, and circulate it, and we could have it probably done in a week.
Yeah, so that then you could take action at the next meeting so that there's not any more real delay.
Okay.
And what do you think about, so probably re-advertize for a public hearing?
Yeah, I think that changes the...
But not require it be a new application, in other words?
We do have a mechanism in our fee schedule and our structure that allows for essentially having a second public hearing or a rehearing. So we could do that, and it would be the same application. We would just republish. If the legal still fits, we'd republish the existing legal, or we can tailor it to make sure it beats the requirements of what is currently being proposed, and we would just republish, re-advertise.
Just big picture, I think, I want to make sure, like, if it's, if they can come in without having to file a new application fee yet.
Yes, yes.
I think it should probably still, I think it should have a new public hearing, in my view.
Yes, I agree.
It's pretty different.
I would agree. It's a significant change from before. Okay. So I'll move that we begin drafting a letter for circulation.
One second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Do we want to take a formal tabling resolution vote, or are we covered under the letter?
I think it's covered by...
Okay. It's covered by the, how about I revise my motion to say I table and have the letter created?
I could do that.
Unanimous consent?
Yes.
Yeah, good, okay.
Right.
We're good. Right? We're good. Okay.
Oh, no, you gotta stay.
Eight minutes. Verizon.
You could try. Okay.
Give it our best shot.
Application number 2, 1838 Pennfield Road, Verizon Wireless.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself on this project.
Okay.
From the cell tower?
Let the record show that Member Canower is recusing himself from the application. Okay, so who wants to start? We've had several different discussions ongoing.
Okay.
Who wants to give an overview?
Okay, I guess I can kick it off. So we're getting down towards the end of our review here and looking at finalizing our TICA review and recommendations. And as part of the board's review, we've recently been taking a pretty good look at the potential visual impacts of the cell tower, noting that there's not much we can do, you know, I mean, we can't, there's not much we can do to buffer the top of the tower or stop people from looking up at it, but that there may be some ground-level mitigations that the board could look at.
What we're trying to do is see if there can be some ground-level mitigation.
Yeah.
And did, I don't know if you have some...
I can short-circuit a little bit of the conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Because Mr. Mancoos and I have had extensive conversation. From our perspective, let me just state for the record, we've been involved in this conversation since November of last year. We were in here at a special meeting on August 15. We repeatedly asked if there's questions about this stuff, and again, for us to get a call at 9 o'clock in the morning on the day of the hearing that this is even in discussion or part of it is disappointing, because we've had this good faith relationship, talking, we've hired consultants, we've hired consultants about the visual, and again, Doug, respectfully, I think you sat through that meeting and you didn't have any other questions or any suggestions. So now we're a month from August 15, and this is coming up. But again, understand that, trying to be cooperative and understand, we provided additional landscaping at the request. Again, if you look at the shelter, I don't know what it is we're hiding with this additional tower, because obviously planting new trees will help block a view, what the view from what is important, because...
Well, I think that there is a concern from the historic preservation districts and the historic preservation boards that the SHIP-O document that they submitted only, did not take into account the fact that Pennfield has its own...
Local landmarks.
...organization and buildings that aren't necessarily listed on a national register or state, and that the state agency only addressed those, and it seemed to be incomplete. So...
And I appreciate, and I appreciate all of that. And again, Verizon wants to be cooperative in this, but again, it's gone on, and we want, so again, there's a couple of questions that have been raised. Are we interested in pursuing additional landscaping? The answer is, we'd prefer not to, because we think that the mitigation that we've provided along, around the fence, I see that, you know, the plan here, that there's some trees planted to the north, we've provided trees or landscaping on the eastern and the northeast side of the compound. Again, planting an additional property, again, all this is trying to be practical. What are we really gaining? But again, if the board is interested in, or the boards are interested in pursuing additional landscaping, Verizon will not, as a policy, engage in planting trees and things on other people's property. We do not have property rights. You get into, we're driving trucks, going on people's property, there's liability, there's warranty, there's maintenance and care, there's the choosing of the trees, et cetera. So from, just making it clear, from our first perspective, we believe that it's, additional landscaping isn't warranted, again, based on the SHIP-O review and the special design of the compound. Again, it's a wood, the canopy is, looks like a park pavilion with the wood fence, you're not going to see the equipment base, because again, it's a special design recognizing the four corners historic. We've already invested in that. And we think that, you know, again, understand the historic districts, what are we shielding from? That it is not, you know, the church is obviously the closest historic building, is that church building? There's nothing from our, looking at that church building, nothing about our tower is going to impair the view of that building. Now, it is close, relatively close in terms of proximity, but again, it's not blocking the view. If you're looking from Pennfield Road, if you're looking, et cetera, if you're looking in the parking lot behind it towards the building, unless your head's behind you, you can't see that tower, right? So again, what is the impact that we are shielding from? And if it's just, we don't want, we don't want to be standing in the church parking lot and see the tower, that's, or shield as much of the base of the tower as we can, great, but that isn't, that isn't mitigating the impact on the historic property, that's blocking from a neighbor they don't want to look at it. That's not impacting the building, right? Because if you're looking towards the tower, you're not looking towards the building, and that's from a practical perspective. But putting all that aside, understanding the time and what's going on this evening, Verizon is willing to have a discussion, understand that what the priorities are, but from a practical perspective, we are not going to enter onto other people's property. So if the town is interested in doing that, what we would suggest the potential of after having the discussions is potentially making a monetary contribution to the town to then engage in the planting of those trees and working with those neighbors, because we just can't take on the liability and everything of going on to other people's property. That would be a nightmare, other than the ones that are involved in our own project. And I suspect potentially the ones on the Pennfield Fire District property, obviously they're our landlord, and we can go to them, but anything that's adjacent, and I understand the trees immediately to the east are located in the town easement area, great, the town can handle that, and if there's a, so Verizon would be interested, would be interested in potentially a reasonable contribution to the town, to their tree fund or something, if the town then wanted to engage in discussions with neighboring property owners about what should or shouldn't be planted and where it should be planted, great, but again, that's a modest, reasonable, because we, contribution, because we've made significant investments in the tower already, including the visual consultant and the RF consultant that have both gone on for months and cost significant dollars above typically what we see. Again, I'm trying to be cooperative, but I hope you understand our frustration, given the late timing of this.
Okay. So I can understand the liability concerns and not, not having an interest in going onto other neighbors' properties and that type of thing. I think that the, having funds available for that type of buffering, to me, seems to be a reasonable solution. We just, I'm not sure what mechanism is in place for that to happen, and I can't believe that it can't be solved. But, you know, I think, you know, I've said this before, we recognize and acknowledge that there's, you know, I guess, a need for the service. These aren't going away.
Right.
I probably can safely say that there's not one individual that lives in the town that's excited about seeing a cell tower in the four corners. None of us are. And what we're trying to do is mitigate those visual impacts as much as we can. So that's, you know, it's, we're, it's going to be impossible to make everybody happy and just trying to do the best we can to mitigate.
Again, the trees behind the church, again, I don't know who's going to be behind the church looking. Along five-mile line, you know, again, if you're driving in the public ways that are going to see it, again, I understand it. So again, if we can have a meeting with Doug, I think, who designed the plan, and have a reasonable discussion.
Sure.
I think if we can do that well in advance of the meeting, Doug, if you could email me this plan, I need to go that to my, to the engineers and to the client, look at it.
Yes.
Again, I think before the, recognizing the time here.
Correct.
We can try to have that discussion, if we can have a meeting early next week or something.
In the next several days or something.
Just sit down for half an hour, we can probably get this, the meat of the discussion resolved.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I don't have any comment. I think that's a procedure that we can implement. In terms of process moving forward, I think it would be a tabling motion, subject to coordination between the town and the applicant regarding the potential development of additional landscaping implementation and then potential monetary contribution for off-site tree plantings. Is that a fair characterization?
That is.
Okay.
And the zoning board, right? Because they got to go to zoning, correct, still?
That's next, that's next.
That'd be next Thursday, and I think this would move in tandem with that, but this is really a planning board consideration.
Okay. Again, just for the record, I'm traveling out of town Thursday morning, so any meeting that we would have, we could have the first three days and next week. Does that work for you?
Yes, that works for me.
All right, great.
Yep, I'll follow up.
Okay.
To get a meeting scheduled.
Thank you.
Anything else that, I think we're, it's really the last item, so... Anything else that I think we're, it's really the last item, so I will move to table pending the resolution of these discussions.
Tidings, second.
We'll give it to Terry.
Go Bills.
Hetskey.
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Bob, come on back up and we will begin the public hearing portion of our evening. For those of you who don't know the process, we have one, one item on our agenda this evening. It is a subdivision and what happens is the applicant will come up to one of these two tables and present, actually, you guys are the applicant? Do you want to choose one of these two tables and get your stuff ready? They will present the, the concept and their, their plan to the board. The board will listen and then ask questions and then we'll open it up for public discussion. If you'd like to speak, once, I'll let you know, obviously, when, when the opportunity arises. When I call you up, please come to one of those two chairs and then state your name and address for the record so that we can have that in our, in the town record. And also, if you are not here and you're one of the millions of people watching from around the world, you can call in at 585-340-38771, so 340-8771. You can also go online and make comments electronically at www.penfield.org. There should be a link to this meeting on the homepage and you can submit your comments electronically. So with that, we will begin the hearing with the pledge of allegiance. All right, one thing, I guess we may need to note that the first application was withdrawn or postponed.
Was postponed.
Was postponed. So I don't know if you want to talk about that. We only have one item that we're discussing this evening.
So, public hearing, application number one, the arbors at Penfield Phase Two. The applicant has requested to postpone their public hearing until October 13th to allow them some additional time to submit all the necessary materials for the board's review. So that'll be postponed until October 13th, 2022.
Okay. So if you're here for that application, that's not going to be heard until next month, as it stands. Okay? So item number two, which is now item number one, what?
Nope, there's no tabling. We just, the board's taking no action on it because it's, we, they requested to withdraw after the legal notice had published. So we had it on the, the agenda and it went out on the agenda.
Okay.
So the postponements, postponement, there's nothing the board needs to do for that. All right. Our second application, 1750, let me get to my legal, printed out on a massive piece of paper on accident. All right. McMahon Leroux Associates, P C, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Christopher and Tracy Smith, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for final subdivision and site plan approval for proposed five lot subdivision where three lots will be designed for single family residents, single family homes with associated site improvements on 53.805 acres located at 1755 Suites Corners Road. The properties are now are formerly owned by Christopher and Tracy Smith and zoned rural agricultural RA2. Application number 22P-0024, SBL number 126.01-1-32.
Okay. And Mr., Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself on this application.
Okay. Let the record show that Board Member Canower is recusing himself from this application. Okay, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Brian White from McMahon Leroux Associates, here tonight with Chris and Tracy Smith, the landowners at 1755 Suites Corners Road. That property is located at the southeast corner of Gloria Drive and Suites Corners Road. We are here tonight seeking final approval for a five lot subdivision where three of those parcels will be developed to a single family home, as Doug had mentioned. We have been working through the approval process with the town regarding the sidewalk easements. We've submitted those to the engineering department. In conjunction with that, we've also been working with the water authority and obtained our approval for water service as well as an easement on Gloria Drive for a 15-foot wide easement for the water main. In addition, those three parcels that will be developed are going to be serviced through a separate field and we're working with the health department to get final approval. I have a few emails out, I haven't heard back confirmation quite yet. Characteristics unique to the property, there's a cemetery located towards the southwest corner of our parcel. We took consideration in our initial submission for a concept review with Doug. We had switched the location of the driveway to give a buffer to the cemetery, to make sure that we didn't encroach on that area. In addition to that, there's a drainage ditch that runs through the center of the property. That's a regulated water course, so we're staying away from that and all of our grading is going to be contained within the silt fence. There's also a drainage ditch located at the southeast corner of Gloria Drive and Suites Corners Road, as well as, we'll be containing that with silt fence and sensitive with our grading for that area.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, Terry, do you want to start off?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions here. So you're going to develop the three lots, correct? One, two, and three?
Correct. Lot two, lot four, and lot five.
Two, four, and five. Okay. And then your intentions are selling off one and three?
Lot one is going to be retained by the Smiths for now. Lot three will be sold to another owner.
All right.
Sure.
Yeah, if you could speak into the.
Talk in the microphone.
Sure.
And Brian, I don't know if you can increase the volume downstairs or actually increase it up here from down there? That would be helpful.
And then if you had time, you took a look at the county planning comments?
Yes, those have been reviewed. Most of those have been addressed in our initial submission. As I had mentioned, we're still working with the health department to get final approval for that.
Okay, so you still got to address that? And what about our PRC comments? You've had a chance to take a look at those?
Yep, we've, we've addressed all those as well as provided the preliminary sidewalk easement, legal description, and easement map.
Your intentions are putting in the sidewalks or seeking a waiver?
Seeking a waiver.
Any draining, does somebody live there right now? Is anybody living in any properties adjacent to it?
That's not part of our subdivision, but that is being occupied currently to my knowledge.
Any drainage, any drainage problems that you're aware of presently?
No, not currently. We had been told by the farmer currently leasing the property that there is some drainage tile in certain portions of the field, but that was a comment that was addressed as well. If that's encountered, we'll make sure that we, you know, fill those in and that doesn't.
Maybe we'll address those with our engineering department. Okay. That's all for me, thank you.
So currently that lot kind of in the middle on the south side of Suites Corners, it's not part of the overall parcel today? Or it, it is part and it's going to be separated out?
So the residence on that property is not part of our subdivision nor the overall property, that's unrelated to our subdivision.
Okay. Kelly, any questions?
Just in regard to the one and three lots, so you're going to sell off lot three? Are they, is there a plan to build on it or?
Actually, no plan to build, they want to keep that wild. The initial agreement is actually with the neighbor across the street wants to purchase that property so they can maintain their line of sight.
Okay. And then same with lot one, I'm assuming, or?
Lot one will be the remaining lands, there's no immediate plans for future development, that will be left over from our subdivision.
Okay.
Lot two's about 2.8 acres, is that, am I reading that right?
That's correct.
And lot five is about three acres?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Yes, sir, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy McCoskey. I live at 1715 Suites Corners Road. The five acre lot that you see there that's surrounded by the subdivision of three, four, and five.
Is you?
That's my property.
Okay.
So I guess my, my first question is, the application is for single family homes. Is that, does that mean one single family home on each of the lots?
As it is proposed here, overall five lots created by a subdivision. Nothing is currently proposed for lot one, nothing is currently proposed in this application for lot three. And they're showing a house on lot two, a house on lot four, and a house on lot five.
Yeah, so it would be a single family, our single family residential zoning is one house per lot, so they would be restricted to one house per each of these lots.
Yeah, so as I understand it, where we live, it's a large lot.
Two acres.
You have to have two acres, right? So lot five, there's no way that could be subdivided.
Correct.
Lot two.
Not to have two houses.
Yeah, lot two, again, no way to be subdivide that.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So lot four is the only one that is potentially subdividable in the future?
Correct. Lots one, three, and five.
Lot one and three potentially could be.
Well, yeah, lot one, yeah. I'm most concerned with what's around.
Around you, sure. Yeah, you're surrounded by lot three, four, and five.
That's correct, yeah. So is there, is there a thought that lot four would be subdivided at some point?
It, the way it seems to be laid out, it, it doesn't strike me as if that would be a likelihood, but we could.
Yeah, can I provide some insight on that? So lot five, four, and three will be sold off to separate owners. I've spoken with a prospective owner of lot four and they have no plan to further subdivide that parcel. So to my knowledge, I've been told the, the single residents comprising the entirety of lot four will remain that way for the future.
Is, is the purchaser of lot four, is that a corporation or is that an individual?
It's an individual.
An individual.
Correct.
Okay. And would there be any, I don't know whether you know this or not, was there any plan to put in a pond or a lake on that property?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Because the drainage runs kind of down into, into my property is my concern there.
If they were ever, if the future owner was ever interested in doing a pond, they would have to go through permit approval with the engineering department.
Guess that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you presently live in one of these lots?
No, we live on Hickory Pond Drive.
Okay. And your intention is not to move to one of these lots?
Lot two.
Oh, lot two is yours, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name is Sarah Claypool. I live at 1740 Gloria Drive. I just had a quick question and I think maybe you may have addressed it, but it was difficult to hear. In the, for lot five, in that northwest corner, there is that drainage ditch. That drainage ditch carries across Suites Corner into our neighbor and into the back of our yards. And so I just would want to make sure, it sounded like he said maybe the engineers had to look at that so that that doesn't end up backing up into the back of our yard from two yards down. Because the farmer that I think maybe you were talking about implemented those because it really backed up in the back of all of our yards. So I would just want to make sure that that was preserved appropriately so that it doesn't end up in the back of our yard instead.
Okay.
So it sounded like maybe you said the engineers have to approve it.
Definitely. And you're right there at 1740 Gloria Drive.
Yep, so that you can see that ditch kind of extends into the back of our property.
Okay.
So I would just want to make sure that doesn't become a factor for us.
Great, sure, thank you.
Okay.
All right, that was all my only question, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on up. And I neglected to say this before, but if you could direct your comments to the board and not to the applicant, that'd be great. Thanks.
I'm Mark Gibson, I have property at 1770 Suites Corners. And my question is, the lot two building driveway, can you tell me if that's directly across from my driveway? And how large is lot two?
Looks like lot two's 2.7. I'm getting old and I probably need cheaters, but.
2.97.
2.97 acres, just under three acres.
2.822 acres. To the right of it.
So just under three acres. Exactly where the driveway is, I'm not certain if that has been determined yet.
It appears to be slightly adjacent to, but this.
Just a little bit left, looking towards Suites Corners from my property?
Uh, yes.
And what's the minimal acreage in the town of Penfield to build a single family dwelling?
In this district is two acres.
Two acres in this, in this zoning district.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? See if anybody from Cyberspace has submitted anything. No call-ins at the moment. One last shot? Anybody want to talk about this? Okay. Thank you all for coming. Thank you very much for your presentation and we'll call the hearing closed. So just so you know, you're more than welcome to stay and observe. We'll go back to our work session. We have one more item to discuss this evening and we will finish up our discussion on, on this parcel.
Do you want to start with this?
Sure.
And then move on to our action item afterwards?
Sure. True thing. So any major concerns from PRC or staff? I didn't think that there was.
No, everything's technical in nature. They've already addressed our comments and we just had some minor comments that we'll provide back to them.
Okay.
We can make.
Yeah, our biggest, our biggest conditioning item or one thing that we would, we're working into, because we do have a draft approval resolution for this prepared, is just the requirement that if they do find anything archaeologically significant on lot four.
Right.
We don't foresee it. That property is actively farmed. If there was something to be found near the boundary to the grave, to the cemetery, a farmer would have likely dug it up already. And the, the, like Mr. White said, we did discuss it with him, they have shifted the location of the house driveway and that for lot four, far enough away that we don't foresee it being an issue, but we are going to put that in a resolution or we would recommend putting that in a resolution, that if they do find anything, that a full archaeological survey would be required.
Okay. All right. I don't, is there any reason why we would?
We've drafted a part two, it's an unlisted action, we've drafted a part two, part three, and a approval resolution.
Pretty straightforward, so I just soon get it off.
Yeah, make the motion to approve the EAF.
A second. Hetskey?
Hetskey, I'm going to take care of that sidewalk waiver stuff too.
Yes, they have to go to the town board for the sidewalk waiver. This is in East Penfield, so there's a specific, actually, I don't believe they have to go to the town board, it's in East Penfield.
No, it's administrative.
So it gets reviewed by the engineering department for approval. So it gets reviewed by the engineering department for approval.
Aiken? Aiken, aye.
Aiken said aye.
You said aye, right?
I said aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye. They'll make the motion to approve the application.
I'll second. Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, action item, Paner Matrail.
Okay, yes, so our action item, 667 Paner Matrail, Durst Imaging. Okay, so a little background on this, this is the, what will be the former, actually, I don't think it's called Penfield Bracket Club anymore, I think it's Apex Fitness. So Durst Imaging is interested in purchasing the property and redeveloping it into an office space. They do printer manufacturing. They're coming to the planning board just for sort of a site plan modification. There's not really any significant changes to the building, it's mostly going to be interior renovations.
And adding a loading dock.
But they're adding, adding a loading dock onto the, I guess was the northwest corner of the building, sort of in the back. I believe it's north of the pool area. It's been a while since I've been in that building. But they're looking to take, they'll take out...
See where the gym is, essentially.
Yes. So they're looking to take out a curbed island and do some pavement improvements. But overall, green space will be increasing. They're looking to add in a couple of new curbed islands that would be larger than what they're looking to take out. So it'd mostly be restriping to allow for larger trucks to be able to, on occasion, deliver...
Right, my understanding is that sometimes they'll get large printers or copiers or something like that, and either for the showroom or samples or that type of thing. From what I've, I've had some knowledge of this, and it seems like it's a nice reuse of the building. So does anybody have any issues with this? Any...
No. I was just going to say about the tractor-trailers, they have tractor-trailers at that loading deck, you're going to have enough room with, because that part, there's another parcel next to it, right? That stuff, like...
Yeah, correct. We submitted a truck turning maneuvering plan that showed how the truck would come through the site. And yeah, there's enough room for a track, full-size tractor-trailer.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and I drove through the site today just to kind of get a idea of the layout, and I assume that staff has reviewed the radiuses for turning. Looks good. Okay.
All right, any...
No.
Okay, somebody want to move to approve this?
Tidings will make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Before we go anywhere, I think she needs your name for the record.
My name is Andy Hart with Bergman.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Any, we have anything else we need to discuss this evening?
That's all I had on the agenda for you guys tonight.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, for coming. Thanks for all your hard work, and we will adjourn.